I need a pen.
You don't need a pen.
I think I'm right.
I don't know. How you doing, John?
I'm good.
You're doing OK?
The two people.
You got one email about the cable.
Yes.
They're coming down the road in December.
I got him time to eat.
Be careful going around that.
What?
Be careful going around that. Mr. Tiller. Help us, Mr. Tiller, around there. OK. You're awesome. I'm sorry, I have one. How are you?
Doing well.
Oh, all right. It's for the government.
Couple things.
They're having a face. I just got one of the cash. I mean, yeah. Everybody's getting it on. I mean, obviously, it's right. Right on the job. It's not yours, it mustn't. This is what happens with Michael's around with the kids.
For column order, the regular board meeting, the D.C. County Board of Symposiums of October 17th. Would you please rise and give attention to the board? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for all the blessings that you bestow upon us. Be with us now if we conduct this meeting and see if we do it in a manner that is most pleasing to you. For these things, we ask in your name. Amen. My pleasure.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here tonight. First, Ms. Watkins, would you do roll call, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood?
Here.
Thank you. First item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Hopefully, everybody has had a chance to take a look.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Page?
I move that the consent agenda be as proved as read and made part of the public record.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Next item is the citizens' comment period. Do we have a list? Next is our residency administrators' report. Mr. Wynn, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Marshall Wynn with VDOT. This past month, we had 76 work orders, completed 71, had five callouts, after-hour callouts. Completed our fifth cycle of specially mo. Our last cycle of primary mo's will start in the next couple of weeks. And that'll be the last cycle for this year until probably next May. Been doing pothole repairs, asphalt repairs, shoulder and ditching, pipe installation and pipe cleaning. Done some ditching throughout the county. I think they told me they've done about 15 miles this past month of ditching and shoulder work. Tree removal and cleanup, sign installation and litter pickup. Do want to remind you that CSX will close a railroad crossing at 155 next Monday and Tuesday to do railroad crossing repairs. So, other than that, I don't have anything else to report unless y'all have any questions.
Mr. Steers?
Mr. Wynn, thank you for being here tonight. And last week at our Transportation Safety Commission meeting, there were 21 job orders deleted from the agenda. And I just wanted to tell you, you guys are out there, you're working it, you're killing it. And I just, we appreciate you, but we also appreciate you guys that are out there, boots on the ground. Just wanted to, if you'd pass that along to them.
Will do. Sorry I missed the last meeting. I was in Atlanta visiting my son, so.
That's right. Family comes first.
Yeah.
Did you make a ballgame while you were down there?
Made three of them, actually. No. They went flat after, they went flat after that, I can tell you.
Mr. Evelyn?
Good evening. I just see the ditching work and cutback that you're doing on Old Church Road. That looks really well. Hopewell Road, I know we've talked about that. Is there any, I'm getting a lot of complaints on that road. Or is there any repaving or upgrade on Hopewell Road in the future?
I'll have to look it up on the schedule.
You mind just checking, looking on that?
I'll check it and get back with you. I should have the completed work for next year we get from the pavement management group.
Right.
And once I get that, that'll be, you know, plant mix work, surface treatment, that sort of thing. So, once I get that information, I'll share that with Rodney and he can share that with y'all.
That'd be good on that road. But anyway, like I said, 606 looks really good. It really needed to be trimmed back. I've got a lot of compliments and, and on the ditch work too, because those ditches were backing up.
As long as the combines don't get any too bad during the season, we'll be OK out there.
The log trucks were knocking it back, some on the brush, but they haven't been down through there.
Well, Point Dexter took care of that one piece of property anyway.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wynn.
OK.
Mr. Lockwood?
Just a couple of things. I already spoke with Jeff on one of the issues that we're working on. But I did want to remind you that we were going to get the tractor back down into Holly Forks and finish up the work. I know you guys had to pull it out to take care of some emergency stuff, so I just want to remind you on that. And then, I don't know if you're prepared to do anything, but maybe the work on Good Hope Road that has been scheduled for a while now. I know Jeff responded recently about getting started on some of that in the next couple of weeks. So, I hope that work is on schedule as well. And I did notice when I was coming through today at, on Roper's Church Road, just before you get to Stage Road, there is a huge chunk of asphalt missing on the side of the road. And it's a front-end eater, so if you guys could maybe get out there and patch that, it would be great.
We'll get with Joe in the morning, take that taken care of.
Other than that, we're good. Thank you.
OK.
Ms. Page? Good, oh, wow. I just have a couple of questions. Any update on the traffic signal at Marketplace Drive?
That's going to be coming up in '24. Probably toward the, I would say, beginning of the summer and that sort of thing. They got to send a task order out to a contractor. And I think Mr. Hathaway knows all about that, so it's coming. It's just taking a little bit of time.
I spoke at my Civic Association meeting Sunday afternoon, and that came up. Multiple times.
Right.
Did all I could to help you out on that.
Understand.
And I know there's been some concerns about the intersection of Dispatch and 249 and now, and then Hennepin 249. And I know y'all were kind of waiting to see what happened when the elementary school opened as far as traffic. Is any updates on those two intersections possibly?
I don't have any updates. I'll get with Philip about that. But I know the last time we did a signal warrant study for Dispatch and 249, it didn't even come close, so.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Do they do it over a 24-hour period?
They do it over a two- or three-day period, really.
OK.
What they usually do. Yeah.
And the last thing, was there any talk in the future of a traffic circle at Hennepin 249? OK. That was another question that came up that somebody said they'd heard that they were talking about.
Mr. Hathaway, do you have any, anything to say about that?
Well, actually, I wanted to go back to Hennepin and Dispatch and 249. Now that we have the schools fully open and Journey Christian Fellowship fully open, and it seems like there's activities every afternoon and on weekends at Journey Christian Fellowship, it probably would be a good idea if we could get a traffic study performed now on those.
Looking at a roundabout? Is that what you're talking about?
Roundabout or light? To see if the warrants are met there.
If you could just send an email to Philip and I, I would appreciate it.
OK. So, should we ask for a traffic light study or traffic study?
They'll just, the traffic study will look at everything.
OK, all right. That's all I had. Thank you.
OK, thank you.
And I'm really glad you're here tonight, because I've got a question for you when it comes time.
Oh, good. I'm Jack Berry, Richmond Region Tourism. I'm joined by Catherine O'Donnell and Danielle Fitzhugh, and we have our annual presentation. This is the footprint that we represent. It's central Virginia. It's seven jurisdictions, and tourism is on fire. It's breaking records. You can see here that the overnight guests are 38% of the day trippers, or 2/3. Total 17.5 million visitors into the central Virginia area. This also shows you the economic spending as well, and we had a tremendous boost. And you can see how New Kent has broken out. This is by Virginia Tourism Presents This to U.S. Travel. And they break down every jurisdiction in the Commonwealth. And so, you can see you had a fabulous year going into 2022. So, tax collections for, of course, you don't have hotels, but the tax collections for the four jurisdictions was up 16%. So, we're at record-level occupancies, we're at record-level rates. It's just exploding, and that's not the case throughout the state. Northern Virginia is still recovering from the pandemic. Tidewater is soft this year. Williamsburg is somewhat flat, but we've had a really good growth in the last 26 months. And of course, these are the four pillars of travel. Top is the family and friends, which is the number-one reason people travel to Virginia, the number-one reason people travel on earth, and we do extremely well with that. Meetings, conventions, and sports activities are the top right, and we really excel very, very well for central Virginia, but we do extremely competitive against the nation. Bottom right is leisure travel, and this gets into the museums, the attractions, the horse track. And this has exploded since the pandemic has somewhat lifted. But where we're still feeling pain is in business travel, which is at the bottom left. That's the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday traveler. This is nationwide, and we don't think that we really will get back to some normalcy until 2025. And these are some of the demographics that are highlighted in our Economic Impact Tourism brochure that we've just put into your packet. This is fresh off the press, and we're featuring Jolene's Winery here. So, we're really, really thrilled with this. And again, this literally was delivered today. But you can see, kind of, I think the most interesting piece is the bottom left is there's no particular season that's outpacing the others, like the tidewater areas, it's all summer. But season of the trip, we do very well in January through March, as well as the autumn, October through December. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Catherine.
Good evening, everyone. Great to see you all again this year. Dive into a little bit more on the promotion side of things. So, part of our job at Richmond Region Tourism is to inspire visitors to choose the Richmond region for their travel. So, we're highlighting here some media attention that we've worked to secure and track. Some great stories about best wine trails in Virginia. Good Housekeeping did a story on the 15 best places to visit last April and mentioned the Richmond region and specifically mentioned New Kent County, as well as golf, which you all do so well in golf here. Golf Week lists all the top public and private places, golf courses in Virginia. And of course, year or two were prominently featured. We also rely on social media a lot to spread the word about all there is to see and do. And I want to, Danielle's going to click this in just a second. We had worked with an influencer by the name of Brian McIntosh, who's out of Canada. And he was here last spring and produced this reel we're going to show you at Saudi Creek. He has more than 70,000 followers, and we posted this last spring as well as this month, because it's Virginia Wine Month, and we've already gotten more than 1,000 engagements. So, we're going to show you this quick reel from Brian. Hopefully. I know, it's working on her computer, but I don't see it on your screen. It's not playing on the TVs either. No? You know, it worked in practice. Here, we will send you guys a link. It's a very cool reel with cool music where he is, he and another person are exploring Saudi Creek Winery. Let me give it one more second. No, Danielle? OK. Thanks, anyway. We'll send you guys the link. This happens to us regularly at all of our presentations, and we just have to roll with it. So, it's, anyway, it's getting great engagement, and we're proud of how that turned out. As you might know, in travel influencers, social media influencers, and content creators have a lot of power to get the word out. And so, working with these partners to spread the word is a good opportunity, and we were so proud to feature you all in that. Of course, sports tourism continues to be important for our region. You all have a great anchor in Colonial Downs. The Virginia Derby was such an important event for keeping us known as a sports tourism destination. And while we had, speaking of sports tourism, one of the things that we hosted this year was the U.S. Sports Congress. So, usually, our team is out going to events to promote the region for sports tourism. Well, we got to host the event here in December. And what we love about Sports Congress is it's not only bringing our peers, but also the rights holders here. And part of the agenda is not just sessions in a classroom, is getting out into the community. And we were able to take two golf outings to New Kent during this event. So, we went on December 3rd and 4th and had two groups come to New Kent and play golf and experience your amenities. So, that was great exposure for you all. So, proud to show your community to our peers and to our rights holders. And every year, we like to update you all on the tourism master plan. So, a few updates today. You may recall, these are the priorities we've been working on. I'm happy to report, we're getting very close and have accomplished some of them since the last time we were here. The Headquarters Hotel, which, this is something Jack works on very closely with the city of Richmond. You all know that we are lacking a Headquarters Hotel next to our convention center, which will allow us to recruit larger, more national conventions. And that is progressing. They're in the interview stages to get that development going. And as always, when we have these large groups, they like to get out when they're not in the convention center, so have more opportunities to show off the region to our delegates. We also launched the Inspiration Campaign. This was funded through ARPA money. For the first time ever, we were able to launch a national awareness campaign in partnership with Economic Development in the Chamber. So, we have nearly $2 million of paid advertising out now and already generated more than 90 million impressions. And the videos and the advertising all leads back to our website, which of course, New Kent County is prominently featured on throughout the site. We also were able to secure a Tourism Improvement District for the Richmond region. This is the first ever in the Commonwealth. It's a 2% fee on hotel rooms, hotels with more than 41 rooms in our funding jurisdictions. So, it really doesn't apply to New Kent in that no one's paying the fee here, but New Kent benefits it because the money then comes to Richmond Region Tourism. We're legally required to use it to generate more visitors and more hotel stays. So, one big piece of that is the marketing that we're going to be doing. And you can see here, we launched July 1st, so we just were able to start spending money this month. You can see here in the chart, the point here is to show you that now we're always on. So, in the past, our marketing dollars were not enough to advertise year-round. We could only do seasonally, and now we have year-round advertising in a variety of campaigns that we've not been able to afford before to draw more visitors to our region. And then workforce development was another priority. And Danielle Fitzhugh, who is our brand-new Vice President of Community Relations, is here to tell you about that.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Part of my purview is our Richmond Region Tourism Foundation, where we elevate and educate our leaders and partners in the community with sports tourism partners and grants. As it relates to workforce, our I Am Tourism is our premier workforce initiative, going out into the community to uplift hospitality careers and showing diverse career path options. We're supporting community citizens, localities, and students in the classroom. Through scholarship support, which you see on the graph as well, we're helping those considering hospitality and tourism as their career path. We're also exposing them to the vast opportunities right here in our region, maybe even right here in New Kent. Our sports tourism grants help expand existing and new events, and we'll talk a little bit of that. That's my last slide. We think the video might work there. Visitors then travel throughout the region to learn and enjoy the community offerings, including right here, the program awards, annual grants to local sports organizations that help uplift and expand existing and new programs right here in the region. We're continuing to expand the reach of the visitor market by driving traffic through our Black RVA and Out RVA programs, including supporting those businesses with events with financial support to grow their markets. I Am Tourism, we hosted five this year alone. And for 2024, we're going to take I Am Tourism on the road, including having an I Am Tourism program right here in New Kent for the community to take part of and exposed to all the offerings we have right here in the county. Our RVA Sports Awards, which has been sponsored since its inception the last three years by Colonial Downs to help uplift Colonial Downs as a sports entity premier in the region, will be held February 3rd, 2024. We'll be back at Altria. We hope to see you there. And all the proceeds from the sports awards goes to help uplift our sports grants that we put out in the community. This year, we have a couple of new features. We're going to be awarding a Youth Athlete of the Year and a Youth Team of the Year, both new programs. And while it may be football season, we do know it's always sports season by the numbers that Jack shared. And so this is just our report from our team to you.
Thank you.
And be happy for any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Berry? Pretty cut and dry. Anybody?
It's a lot better presentation we had four, five, three or four years ago.
Yes, it is.
So thanks for moving forward, so.
Yes.
Nice presentation.
A lot of y'all's information that y'all gather and that you put out, because I was on a trip a couple of weekends ago with some friends of mine, and one of them asked me, he said, "How do they know what they know about tourism and the city?" And my first comment to him was, "I think some of it is done through people that actually stay here and surveys that they respond to." Is that a reasonable?
Yes.
Yes, in part. I think part of it is, we're immersed in the community that we serve, right? And then we also rely heavily on our colleagues in each locality to inform us about what there is to see and do. And then we also rely on our attractions, so everybody promotes themselves through us, right? So we're like the megaphone, but we need to know what everyone's doing to be able to share it. So it's a, it's a team effort, but we also do survey our visitors over periodically to get their sentiment about what they think about the region. We also do the data that we presented through survey.
That was a lot more elegant than what I told him, but thank you.
Yeah.
But that, that does answer a lot of my questions.
Yeah.
So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Well, thank you again for your presentation and the good news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, and thank you for delivering the proclamation for your support of Thrive Virginia and the work that we do. My name is Caitlin Aguilar. I'm a VCU student intern working at Thrive Virginia. I'm here to speak to you for a few minutes about Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thrive Virginia is a community action agency dedicated to fighting poverty, and as such, our work involves supporting survivors of domestic violence. Here are current, here are the current U.S. National Domestic Violence Statistics. On average, nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States. During one year, this equates to more than 10 million men and women. One in three women and one in four men have experienced some form of physical violence by an intimate partner. One in seven women and one in 25 men have been injured by an intimate partner. The presence of a gun in domestic violence situations increased the risk of homicide by 500%. Intimate partner violence accounts for 15% of all violent crime. On a typical day, there are more than 20,000 phone calls placed to domestic violence hotlines nationwide. That's almost 15 calls per minute. Those numbers are shocking, but what this is, what does this mean for the communities that Thrive Virginia serves? According to the 2023 census data, the population of New Kent County is approximately 24,301 individuals. 48.5% of those are women, 51.5 are men. If national data can be applied to New Kent County, this means that there are approximately 11,590 women in the county. Therefore, if one in three of those are physically abused, that means that there are 3,863 women who may experience domestic violence in New Kent County. Note that in the fiscal year 2023, Thrive Virginia's counseling and advocacy program served more than 200 individuals that have been affected by domestic violence. 28 of those clients face homelessness because of that violence. 61 received financial assistance. 37 were provided crisis intervention services. 14 were provided employment services. Unfortunately, with these numbers, we know that we aren't reaching nearly enough people with our services, and we want to continue to raise awareness so that all of those who need help know where to turn. With that being said, I will now turn to our educational specialist, Carmina Galvez, to talk about Thrive Virginia's upcoming awareness campaigns and events. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. During October's Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Thrive Virginia staff hopes to raise local awareness through the following events. You can find the hashtag #ThisIsDomesticViolence posters placed throughout the community. This poster campaign uses powerful quotes to highlight various overshadowed power and control methods outside of physical violence, such as financial, psychological, and emotional abuse. From today until Friday, Thrive Virginia is hosting the Silent Witness Exhibit. This exhibit uses human-sized, red wooden silhouettes with writing that shares real accounts of people killed by domestic violence. And this display can be found outside of the New Kent Sheriff's Department, where folks can also obtain Thrive Virginia's informational brochures. I would also just like to take this moment to thank the New Kent Sheriff's Department for collaborating with Thrive Virginia for the Silent Witness Exhibits. We truly appreciate their partnership and efforts to keep the community safe. On October 26th, from 12:30 to 3:30 p.m., we'll be hosting an event with the Upper Manapana Indian Tribe at the Atlee Library in Mechanicsville for a Lunch and Learn event with guest speakers. So if you're interested in attending, please email A-T-I-E-R-N-E-Y at ThriveVA.org to RSVP. Lastly, our team is working together to provide care baskets for families impacted by domestic violence. Thank you so much for your time and attention this evening, and I hope to see you guys at one of the events. Thank you.
So on the behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I'd like to read this proclamation, proclamation proclaiming October 2023 Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects all races, ages, and genders, and income levels, and whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects over 4 million Americans each year, and whereas one in three Americans will witness an incident of domestic violence, and whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average, and whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity, and whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that on this day, the 17th day of October 2023, the New Kent Board of Supervisors does proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourages the citizens of New Kent County to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. Signed by County Administrator Rodney Hathaway and Board Chair C. Thomas Tiller. And thank you so much for the good work that Thrive does in our community, and thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the Business Incentive Grant Program. Assistant County Administrator Matthew Smolink.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Matthew Smolink, your Assistant County Administrator. If I could talk just a minute or two about business incentives. I want to give a, just a brief overview of the incentives program. So business incentives are one of the many tools in the toolboxes of economic developers and localities. To the best of my knowledge, I'm not aware of any locality in the Commonwealth, nor any state in the Union that does not use business incentives. And anybody who's ever been a part of attracting, retaining, or expanding a business is well aware of how business incentives are utilized. It comes down to basic economics. So think about it as if you were a consumer. If you're looking to buy a car at two dealerships, they've got identical cars, same warranty, same maintenance schedules. One car's $3,000 cheaper. Where are you, the consumer, going to make that purchase? Probably the place where you're gonna get the better deal. It's also true with businesses. If everything else is the same, where are they gonna locate, relocate, or expand their business? The answer is the place where it's gonna get them the better deal and make the most business sense. If no incentives are offered, then it's very likely that a business will choose another locality, or may choose not to expand their operations within the existing locality in which they operate. Comes down to simple math. If the business does not come to New Kent County, then we'll receive exactly 0% of the zero tax dollars that are generated, or in this scenario, not generated by a company. On the contrary, if incentives are part of the equation to close a deal, then we'll get, say, 70% of 30 million of the tax dollars that are in fact paid to the county. Again, this comes down to basic math. I'd take 70% of 30 million over 0% of 0 any day of the week. So the, the history of the EDA Business Incentive Program, this is really geared towards our small businesses. The first EDA business grant was approved May 18th, 2009. Year-to-date allocations from this Board of Supervisors to the EDA are right at $490,000. allocations in 2007, 2008, 2017, and 2018. Total grants awarded and paid in full, $299,605.52. Total grants awarded still outstanding, $191,166.67. That leaves us with a whopping fund balance of non-committed funds of $27.81. Summary of the grants, I just, you know, just went back, you know, seven years. You've got a list of them in front of you. As you can see, of the $490,000 that was allocated, a little over $353,000 has been awarded in just the past seven years. I want to note, the first business on the list, they received a grant but later withdrew their application due to a change in their business plans. That money was recycled back into the program. And looking at the past seven years, awards have been given to nine business owners who are New Kent County residents. Two business owners have moved their entire operations from the city of Richmond to New Kent County. One business has moved their entire operation from Jame City to New Kent. We've assisted with multiple business expansions and have also provided some much-needed services to the county residents, such as the county's first pediatric office. I currently have a business in a holding pattern right now due to the lack of current funds in the program, who's looking to relocate their entire site work business from Jame City to New Kent. So the county's always taken care of our businesses in good times and bad. We can all remember what the economy looked like during COVID. This is a time when this Board of Supervisors and the EDA Board reached out to help the small business community right here in New Kent County. $35,000 from the EDA's Business Incentive unallocated fund balance was redirected towards a COVID loan program administered by the EDA Board. These loans were advertised and were given out to seven New Kent County small business owners with a 0% interest rate and a two-year repayment plan. I'm proud to say that all $35,000 has been repaid over the course of two years back to the EDA by our business owners, and this money went back into the, into the balance for the program. So in addition to the COVID loan program, this Board of Supervisors allocated $112,500 for a small business grant program that was administered by my staff and the EDA Board. Each qualifying New Kent small business received a check in the amount of $2,500 to assist them with the economic downturn associated with the COVID pandemic. Dozens and dozens of business owners received this. Some of the ones that come to mind, Mark Daniel, Great South Realty, Stephanie Ripchick, Holly Ford, Produce &amp; More, Larry Reynolds, Gracefield Hall, Ben Breakfast, and dozens and dozens of others. And I had the opportunity to sit there and to, to look each business owner in the eye, shake their hand, and give them a check written from New Kent County to their small business, and to hear the words of thanks that I received from these small business owners. New Kent County cares about the small businesses here in the county. And I want to continue that. The, the combination of the EDA's $490,000 Business Incentive Program, the $35,000 0% Loan Program, $112,000 Small Business Grants, this is what I like to call the New Kent County Small Business Treatment. This is how we take care of our small businesses here in the county, and I want to continue this program, as does the EDA. So I'm here tonight. I talked about our whopping balance of $27.81. I have a business in a holding pattern, waiting to, to see if, if we will get, you know, funded for this program. So in order to continue the Small Business Incentive Grant Program, and on behalf of the New Kent County EDA Board, I'm requesting an additional allocation of $100,000 to be made to refund the program to assist with the recruitment, retention, and expansion of the small businesses within New Kent County. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Smolink?
Not a question, but I just want to say thank you, Matt, for bringing this up and, and kind of giving everybody a refresher on, on how we have supported our small businesses in, in the community and continue to do so. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments for Matt? Is this something we need to vote on at a later date, Mr. Hathaway, as far as funding?
No, this is something that can be voted on now. If you so choose, I would recommend that a motion be made to appropriate $100,000 or the amount that you feel appropriate from the Colonial Downs Capital Revenue Line item for the funding of Economic Development Authority Business Incentive Grants.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway.
And if you so choose, I have a motion.
Good for you. Just happened to have that on hand. Would anybody, okay. Mr. Evelyn?
Mr. Smolink, thank you. I would have to concur with Mr. Lockwood, especially during the COVID pandemic. I know a lot of those small businesses that have reached out to me, and that $2,500 grant really helped them out during, you know, some tough times that, that we all faced doing that. So thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Without the, no further questions, I move to appropriate $100,000 from the Colonial Downs Capital Revenue Line item for allocation to the New Kent County Economic Development Authority to be used to assist with the recruitment, retention, and expansion of small businesses within the county.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Thank you very much for your.
Thank you, Matt. Next on our agenda, we have public hearings, unless somebody would like to take a short break in between. All right, well, all right, we can do that. Let's move on to the elected officials' reports. Mr. Steers, do you have anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, the month of October, and on behalf of- of my colleagues, the other board members, and myself, we would like to present Patricia Page with a dozen pink roses for keeping up the fight.
So to my colleagues, I know I'm a handful.
Double handful.
I see your sister back in there, she's shaking her head yes.
And so I know I'm a handful and can be a handful, but the one thing I do know is that I know that my heart is at the right place, and I always feel like I'm the mother of the group, and so since I'm the mother of our team here, I am absolutely appreciative. I'm very humble, and I'm very grateful, and I'm very appreciative that you have taken the time to think about me. I can't tell you that the last couple of years have been easy years, they have been quite rough years, but the good news is that when you have a team that's behind you, it makes the bad days so much better. So to each and every one of you, I want to say thank you. And since I am a handful, Mr. Chairman, may I say something for my elected official report?
You can, Mom.
See, there you go. So I would like to say that on November the 11th at 3:00 at the New Kent High School track, the American Cancer Society's largest fundraiser, which is a relay-for-life, will be from 3 until 7:00. We ask that you come out, it's a way to support those that have been fighting cancer, those that have won the battle, and those caregivers that have looked after those that are still fighting. And so with that said, I hope to see each and every one of you, and again, thank you all so very, very much for this pleasant surprise.
You are very welcome, thank you. Mr. Steers, do you want to add to your elected officials' report?
No, sir, I think that's enough.
All right, Mr. Evelyn?
Kind of hard to top that one, but today we had a light-up ceremony at the New Kent Winery for Cox. Fellow board members were there today. The COO of Cox came in to New Kent from Atlanta and a bunch of the corporate people. Mr. Lockwood, I'm sure he's got some comments on this, he's had some of his residents lit up and connected to the internet, but for District 1, yesterday was the first day that we actually had a few homes that were lit up in the district. So it was very exciting today. I know my residents are excited, they've reached out to me, I've been reaching out to them. They plan on expanding service in the district in the next weeks, next months, and supposedly everyone in District 1 should be hooked up to broadband by the first quarter, by the end of the first quarter of next year. So that is exciting for District 1. I would like to thank my fellow board members for making that happen. I know this was big, it's been a huge priority of mine to get internet to all the residents of the county and getting fiber to everyone's home at no cost is huge. So I'd like to thank everybody out there for that today. And I would be remiss if I didn't say something about the Bowl-A-Thon, the New Kent Education Bowl-A-Thon, this evening, since my wife is in the back of the room that's in charge of it. The Bowl-A-Thon is the biggest fundraiser for the New Kent Education Foundation, so please sign up. I know the county has, Mr. Hathaway, the county has a team. It is a great day. Dr. Nichols, a bunch of teachers, it's a lot of fun, so I ask you to, if you can't sign up, at least come out and support it, or if you cannot do that, make a donation. And today at the ceremony, Cox donated $10,000 to the New Kent Education Foundation, so it was a big day for that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And that just goes to show that Cox has said all along that they would be partners with the county, so that was a good step in the right direction there this morning. Ms. Lockwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just want to follow up on Mr. Evelyn's conversation there about Cox. It was a really exciting time, you know, representing the Barrensville area, that end of the county has always been the, you know, the least covered of the entire county as far as opportunities to connect to broadband or any kind of internet service. So I was very pleased to hear today a number that surprised me, quite frankly, 400 homes or 400 installations completed so far, and since I know that Mr. Evelyn only has two, that means I'm up on him by 398 if I do the math right, so. But it has been very exciting just watching the progress, and it has been extremely impressive how they roll through an area and the underground is happening while the overhead is happening. As soon as those guys roll out, the splicing crews come in and drop the lines to homes, so they definitely have an impressive process, and things are definitely moving along as scheduled. And I think the biggest takeaway for me on this is that when we started this process, we knew we wanted a fiber to every home and every business in the county. That was kind of the easy decision. The harder decision was convincing a business that has a business model that looks for a return on their investment to come into the area and start with the hardest first instead of the easiest. And that's what Cox did, that's what they committed to do, and that's what they are doing, so things are moving on schedule, and they're doing it exactly the way they promised they would. So I definitely applaud Cox for following through with things the way they have. So yeah, it was an exciting day, definitely, to hear some of those numbers. I did have a couple of my neighbors that run an internet business from their home, have for years, and they've been using everything imaginable from DSL to connecting with hotspots just to get things, keep things moving. And they sent me an email the other day, it was actually my birthday, so we both got a present. They were connected to Cox that day and sent their first email thanking me and the rest of the Board of Supervisors for getting it done. Their download speed was somewhere in the neighborhood of 650, 670 megabits per second. Their upload speed was 560-something megabits per second, which is basically symmetrical and incredible that that's even available. So it was just really good. Their response to that was wow, and I would agree with that sentiment, so. The only other thing I did have is this Saturday, New Kent's Clean County Committee, from 9:00 to 1:00, right here in the parking lot, is going to have their twice-a-year shredding event, so you can bring tires with no rims. We'll be shredding paper, we'll be receiving electronics, eyeglasses, hearing aids, plastic bags, those will be collected by the Lions Club. And every time we do this, we also ask folks to make a donation if they'd like to the animal shelter and bring food or financial donations. If you do decide to bring a check, please make that check out to the New Kent County Treasurer, and we'll make sure that it gets to the animal shelter, but look for information on the county's website and Facebook page and bring, this is a great opportunity, get rid of some of that junk, y'all, and just clean out the garage, clean out your office. I've been telling my wife that for a while, so I won't go there now, but yeah, it's a great opportunity to get rid of a lot of stuff and to get rid of it appropriately where it can be recycled, reused, and disposed of properly, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Ms. Page, did you want to add to yours?
Not right now.
Well, this is your opportunity. All right, Mr. Evelyn?
Thank you, Mr. Tiller, I forgot to add one thing. This Friday, New Kent Parkson Commission is hosting the Fall Festival from 4 to 7. It's been a great event at Pine Fork Park. I think this is the second year that they've done that, they had over 1,000 people. It's kind of a trunk or treat event, and so I know we'll be there, I'll be there, and I'm sure a lot of the county will be there, so it's a great event. So I ask you to come out to that event with kids and before hitting to the homecoming game Friday night, so I just want to mention that. Thank you, Mr. Tiller.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn. One thing I wanted to remind people of, there's a really big election coming up here in a few weeks, I believe it's November the 7th, is that correct?
Twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days, but who's counting? Yeah, not me. No, I'm actually working the polls that day, believe it or not, for Mr. Moyer, who's sitting here in the audience tonight. I just wanted to remind people to vote, and I wanted you to all do your homework on this, for this election. This is a really big election for New Kent County this year. Do your homework, find out who you're voting for, don't depend on Facebook and everything that you can read on Facebook, because it's just not, it's not always the truth. So we don't need a group of people outside of the state of Virginia in a PAC telling us how to run our county, whether it's a PAC or a millionaire from Texas, it doesn't matter. We need to do our homework and vote smart. So thank you, and that's all I have for that. Staff reports, Mr. Hathaway?
I have done, thank you.
How about any other, pardon? No. I thought we did what we done, that changed. Other business, Mr. Hathaway?
I have no other items for other business.
Okay. I know, we're moving along. All right, let's move on to appointments. Anybody have any appointments delegated by district?
I move to appoint David Ward as District 5 Representative to the Transportation Safety to Commission to serve a four-year term beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31st,
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Anybody else have any by district? If not, Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Appointments not delegated by district? None? Appointments for regional boards and commissions? All righty, moving along. So the only thing we have left on our agenda tonight is a few public hearings, and I think we can take a short 10-minute break in between. Are you all good with that?
[inaudible]
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 Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Before you, for your consideration tonight as a resolution requesting VDOT to impose a through truck restriction on Route 603, which is Good Hope Road, beginning at Route 627, which is Stage Road, through to Route 620, which is Homestead Road. As required by the Code of Virginia and VDOT, whenever a through truck route restriction is imposed, there has to be an alternative route that's identified as well. And in your packet, you should have a map of an alternative route. Their total is about 6.7 miles, mainly using Waterside Drive, Route 60, and a portion of Homestead Road as well. The first step in the through truck route restriction is to pass this resolution requesting VDOT to impose this truck route restriction. The next step will be, if adopted tonight, sending this resolution to VDOT. I will also have to send this resolution to James City County, whereas James City County will be required to draft a letter of support for this as well. Reason being is that the alternative route, a portion of the alternative route goes through James City County. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hathaway?
Mr. Hathaway, what happens if James City County refuses to adopt?
Well, ultimately, VDOT has the final decision. But, you know, VDOT does want to ensure that James City is supportive, that by closing the route in New Kent, it could be sending additional truck traffic through James City. So, it could impact VDOT's decision.
Any other questions, Mr. Hathaway? If not, I will open public hearing R-24-23 Good Hope Road through truck restriction. Sign up sheet? There's nothing on it. I don't want it. Oh, we do have three. Okay. Had a few people sign up for this. I will ask you to come to the podium. I'll call your name, state your name and address for the record, and we'll have three minutes to plead your case. First on the sign up, John Anders.
John Sanders, forty-twenty Good Hope Road. I want to just let you know that I'm fully in support of closing the through traffic for trucks on Good Hope Road. I was not aware that you were adding Homestead to this. Now, you brought James City County into it, and I'm not sure that's wise on our part. VDOT will let James City County kind of dictate to that. Good Hope Road on the end that I live, in the lower end, we've been kind of a disadvantage. The road is very narrow. It gets narrower every year because VDOT doesn't maintain it. They've went and thrown some asphalt on some places. The ditches that were promised that they would have done by September have not been done. Now, I'm being told it'd be October. The end of the county that I live on has probably tripled in the number of residents there. Now, we have houses right along the road with school-aged children. The road is forty miles an hour, and as I said, very narrow. There's trees on either side. If you ever have to swerve, people are going to get seriously hurt. Now, I've been working on this and discussing with this for over six years with VDOT. The only thing I've ever gotten is them to lower the speed five miles an hour from forty-five to forty, because somebody from VDOT actually drove our road and couldn't explain to me why Waterside Drive, which is two lanes paved and has easements on both sides, why Good Hope Road, which has none of that, was at a higher speed. I'm sure your school bus drivers have got to have contacted Mr. Hathaway on them trying to get through our road, especially the three-thousand block, four-thousand block, with all the traffic, the truck traffic's coming through there. Now, when you close with through trucks, it still has to be enforced. If you don't enforce it, nothing's going to happen. Some of my neighbors here will be talking about some of the mailboxes that they've lost. I would just implore you that this is just the start of what we need on Good Hope Road. I'm glad to hear that we're getting internet. I understand we're supposed to get it in December, but you know, it's, all that's going to do is increase the number of emails that I'm sending to VDOT and you guys. Mr. Hathaway's probably tired of hearing from me, and I know John is. But I saw your all faces when you were smiling at the sports video. If you want a thrill, come down Good Hope Road at forty miles an hour. That'll give you a thrill. Thank you for your time.
Next on the agenda or sign up sheet, Stephen Caberoy. Did I say that right? Close enough?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Stephen Caberoy, one-five-two-three-one Buck Calhoun Boulevard, which is a private road off of Good Hope. And, sorry, John, but I don't support the truck restriction unless a survey was done to confirm that truck traffic is significant. I don't see it. Most of the truck traffic you're seeing on the road right now is going to the one company that lives on Good Hope Road. They have heavy equipment coming and going on a daily basis. There's a, and of course, there's a lot of construction going on, most of it on George Warren Franklin Parkway right now. They had three concrete trucks going in there today. We're one country road that's substandard and with a blind hill and curves. While the recent reduction in the speed limit and added signage may be beneficial to the new residents, the basic problem of the road has not changed. Road's barely sixteen feet wide. The edge of the road is heavily driven on because it's a country road, and you've got to let traffic come through. So is the shoulder. In many places, the drainage gully starts at the edge of the asphalt and can fall off two feet. So, the mailboxes are at the height of the side mirror of a passenger car. They're sixty-eight inches from the edge, and that's per Post Office code. Pickup trucks are eight feet wide from the edge of the passenger tire to the driver's side mirror. Commercial trucks, garbage trucks, school buses, trailers, boats, and duly's, they're all eight feet wide. So, we've got a sixteen-foot-wide piece of asphalt, and we've got vehicles that are eight feet wide. They're going to hit unless they drive off the road. If any of the vehicles are passing, somebody has to put a wheel in the ditch. I've seen many large tire ruts as a result of the gully after rain being at the edge of the road. If it was a passenger car, a tow truck would have been called. There are several driveways that have their stone extending into the road, which raises the right side of the vehicle another four inches or so. If a trash truck or school bus passes this drive, the change in elevation will cause them to hit each other. At one end of Good Hope Road, there's a boat ramp. In the middle of the company, large commercial truck traffic, nearly every resident has a pickup truck, a dump trailer, boat, or all three. School bus is just as bad as a tractor-trailer. We can't stop all of this traffic because that does not impact by the restriction. The resident population along the stretch has doubled the last seventeen years that I've been there. We now have to deal with large trash cans lining the edge of the road, which takes another twelve inches of usable space, even if it does not touch the road. I know widening the road's a major undertaking and is very costly. An interim fix could be to harden the edge of the road, allow for support when having to provide for passing traffic to make more room, move the drainage gullies from the edge of the asphalt, move them in twelve, move them out twelve inches, and then fill that resulting space with crush and run. Our mailbox has been destroyed twice, and I lost a passenger vehicle or the side mirror on my car to a mailbox. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I want to sign up Mark Stoner.
Hi, Mark Stoner, three-five-nine-zero Good Hope Road. I apologize. I didn't actually come prepared to speak because I just found out I was coming about an hour before I got here. My wife says, hey, there's a meeting. You should go. So, I'm here representing those with small kids on that road. We have four kids, little girls, myself, and then our neighbors across the street also have some kids. And I know in the mornings waiting for the school bus, we do see a few of these big trucks running down the road. So, I also want to voice my support in restricting the road to the through trucks. I'm not sure where they're going. I'm pretty new to the area, so I'd be welcome to learn more about where these trucks are headed and where they're working. We just moved in this summer. But for now, I would say, from what I do know, I would be in support of this. Also, all of the improvements to the road would be welcome, in my opinion. It is very narrow. It is difficult to have two cars passing, even if they are small cars. You do run off the road a lot. And I would just feel a lot safer for myself and my family, my kids, to have the road improved in general. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everyone that signed up for the public comment portion of this public hearing. This time, I will close the public comment section of the public hearing. Mr. Hathaway?
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hathaway?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution R-24-23 to approve a through truck restriction on Route 603 Good Hope Road between North Waterside Drive and Homestead Road.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page? Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Next on the agenda is public hearing R-25-23 Stage Road Through Truck Restriction. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Before you, you have Resolution R-25-23. This resolution is to request VDOT to approve a through truck restriction on State Route 632, which is Stage Road between Route 33 Eltham Road and Route 30 New Kent Highway. As you recall, earlier this year, the board requested VDOT, and that request was approved to establish a through truck restriction on Stage Road between New Kent Highway and Route 33. Basically, the, I guess that's the north side of Stage Road, the north side of Route 33. Now, we're looking at the south side of Route 33, or maybe it's the east side of Route 33, which is also an established and popular through truck route for tractor-trailers. 33, which is also an established and popular through truck route for tractor-trailers jumping off of Interstate 64 when traffic is backed up, mainly heading east towards James City and Williamsburg. As required by state code and VDOT, whenever we establish a through truck restriction, we have to establish an alternate route. And that alternate route consists of 6.14 miles, utilizing Exit 220 to Route 33, Eltham Road, going to the stoplight, and then making a right and going down Route 30, which are definitely roads designed and capable of handling tractor-trailer traffic. This time, I'd be happy to answer any questions. This request does not impact any adjacent localities, so it's purely a request to VDOT. No other action is involved other than sending them this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hathaway before we? All right. This time, I open public hearing R-25-23, Stage Road, through truck restriction. Sign up?
No.
No one signed up? I will close the public comment portion of this public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question for Mr. Hathaway. This passes, you know, along with the other one, you know, I would ask you to work with VDOT to actually figure out where they're going to put those no-through truck signs.
The signs.
I mean, if you notice the one on Old Church Road going to Hanover, the sign is at the New Kent-Hanover line, and once you get there with the tractor-trailer, there's no way to turn that truck around.
Right.
So, I mean, if you're going there the first time, I mean, you really don't have any choice. So I would ask you to talk with VDOT and work with them and even figure out something on that one, too, because when, once you get down there, there's nowhere to turn a truck around there on Old Church Road.
That's right.
At the Hanover line.
Okay.
That's my only comment.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I would definitely agree with Mr. Evelyn. You know, getting those signs out on 33 and 30, you know, preventing trucks from turning on those roads in the first place is going to be critical to this being successful because there is no place for you to go once you make that turn. As a matter of fact, I was sitting at the end of Stage Road at Route 30 the other day in a little parking lot there, and a tractor-trailer turned left off of Route 30, and he got in there just long enough to realize there's no way he's going to go much further than that, and literally backed back out onto Route 30. That kind of scared the, but anyway. So, yeah, there's, it definitely is going to need them to be very thoughtful about having a couple of signs, letting them know, because Farmers Drive is no-through trucks, and if you don't know that, you'll never know it by the signs. So, you know, they need to definitely think about placement and maintenance of those signs.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Page.
Now, when we did the, the Stage Road, if you're traveling westbound on 249, I believe it's two signs that say that it's no-through traffic, but it's on 249. It's not on, it's not on the 30 side. It's not on the, yeah, I guess the New Kent Highway side, it's not there. So you're not, you go across.
Right.
It's not on that side.
Yep.
It's just on 249.
Okay.
So if they could do a sign like that, I think that's what Mrs. Evelyn, Mr. Evelyn was talking about, they could do a sign like that before you even turn to the restricted, exactly.
Okay.
So can we make these recommendations to VDOT?
Yes, we can. I will, I'll work with VDOT for these and those existing ones that you've identified, too, to see if we can put some, at least some warning signs prior to the actual sign that's installed.
Any other questions or comments for this public hearing? If not...
Mr. Chairman, I have another motion.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt R-25-23 to approve the through, a through truck restriction on Route 632, Stage Road, between Eltham Road and New Kent Highway.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Any other, anybody else have any concerns tonight? Our meeting schedule, the next regularly scheduled meeting for the Board of Supervisors will be held at 6:00 PM on November the 15th, 2023, and the next work session will be held at 9:00 AM on October the 31st, both here in the boardroom of the County Administration Building. And the Board will also meet for a budget retreat at 9:00 AM on October the 20th, 2023, at the Providence Forge Rec Center. Thank everybody for being here tonight, and I hope you all have a good week, and...
Motion for adjournment.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the member?
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Meeting adjourned.[1787.41]